Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We are now beginning the Windham Northeast Unified Elementary School District Meeting in conjunction with the Westminster School Board. Hello, everybody. Let's start by finding out if there are any public comment.
Do we want to start with adjustments to the agenda?
Nah, we could. All right, let's do adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda that anyone might care? Right. Um, actually, point. We had an extremely long discussion last evening about about the protocols that we shall follow as SU. And one of the things that came out of that was a discussion about that perhaps individual boards should make a determination. We don't really have that formally on our agenda. I would say that we are dealing with a primary school group largely under 12, so it's not 100% obvious to me that we need to get into it this evening. But on the other hand, I was asked by by the Chair of the Rockingham Board. She expressed some interest in hearing what we might have to say about it. So I'm pulling you all, do you want to talk about it or was last night no punish?
Hi, Jack, clarify this for me, are you talking about COVID?
Yes, the COVID protocol.
COVID protocol, I think we should only because people are looking to hear that each of the boards has is going along with the
Or is at least whatever it is.
Or whatever they might like to.
Sure, okay, then what does add that to our agenda? If there are no objections to saying. All right, I think beyond that, I think beyond that, is there anything else anyone wishes? Do you want to talk about the the business with the resolution you brought up before the resolution you brought up for the SU Board last night? Cheryl, is that something you want to talk to or do you think, or again? I don't want to repeat too much, but I also don't want to skip over things.
Right, you know, I'm thinking for the public for just a minute. One of the things we need to be sure about is that this is a meeting of the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District with the Westminster School Board. I don't know whether we want to do a quick meeting of the Westminster School Board to do things like just review the minutes of the last meeting.
I think that, I think we can, my thought was that we don't have, thank you, a point in here to recess to allow that to happen. And I'll make a note and make a note to both Chris and to Nicole that we need to have that as part of our routine outline for all meetings going forward between now and next July.
And we could do that, I think, at nearly any time in the meeting, I think it doesn't matter what sequence we do that. I think secondly, I'd like to reinforce what David Major said, and that is, given the concern of parents, we're hearing from so many, and given that our policy as a district is to have the independent school boards take action on policies of this kind, I think we should consider what the Supervisory Union took action on last night and reinforce that or take it a different direction, but I think it is well appropriate.
And without objection, let us do that.
And then finally, we might just do an introduction for the public and which you normally do.
Which I normally do and will momentarily. The, there was a third item, which was we had a rather long and perhaps more unpleasant than necessary discussion about S U grant money and whether or not monies that are allocated by, at least at the district, at the SU level and presumably by the district level, whether this should be at least something run by individual boards and now I know that I could tell there were some hard feelings on that subject. And I'm wondering if it's something we could at least explain to people what we're talking about, what S U is and what we're trying to accomplish in terms of having boards understand where the money is where is being proposed that money be spent so that at least we know that and can have some input beyond that of the sort of the community board, teacher committee that is informally been doing that stuff. If you want to discuss that again, I'm praying for brevity, but.
I just want to make a comment to that.
Three items we're going on to, and now we will go to introductions. And let's start from my furthest right. Ms. Pratt?
Chris Pratt, you present. David Major, Westminster School Board Member.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster School Board.
Jack Prior, Chair of the Windham Northeast Unified Elementary School District. And Rep. From Grafton.
Lynn Morgan, a member of the Westminster Northeast Unified Elementary School District.
And Melissa Carlstern, member from Westminster.
Liz Hardy, Principal Westminster Center School.
We also have a couple of folks online. I saw Jessa West Clark from Grafton. I saw Ginger as well, if you are out and available, why don't you introduce yourselves?
I am here, Jessa West Clark from Grafton.
I am here, okay. Jessa, you may have to turn off your mic because I promise you I can't hear you.
Oh, of course.
Also, we have, is there anyone else? Ginger here, is Charlie here.
Charlie's here, but I just said we'll be back in the room, I'm sure.
All right, well, the person that's not here that will be here later will be Charlie Hutchinson, Westminster, on the Westminster School Board. So we now have our, our adjustments. Let us open it up, we made two, three, which is communications and public comment. Do we have anything anywhere? I'm sorry. No problem.
Just your speakers to make sure people can speak. I have a comment. I don't see any hands raised or anyone that wants to make a public comment, I would just suggest that they speak up.
Yeah, we're a small intervention group. Well, not hearing any, I will, just for the public record, say that there has been some rather widely online discussions by folks both for and against the presumed masking policy. I would encourage people that wish to talk about that, oh, I see Watson, everyone would like to comment. Why don't you do that? Can you put your speaker on and tell us your thoughts?
Yeah, my name is not Watson, that's actually my son's name always comes up when I go onto Zoom. My name is Ian Beals.
Matt, with just a moment, we're going to, we're going to have the volume turned up because I can read what you're saying, but I cannot hear it.
Place another job or speak 750 nearby and tap its link button to link them together.
It's may take a moment.
That's okay.
See if they can do it now.
Okay, why don't you speak up and shout if you feel you need to?
Okay.
Do you want to hear from you?
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm, I listened to the board meeting last night. I am strongly in favor of universal masking of students.
I'm going to read your comments because I cannot hear you with your, with your permission.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, you're speaking in favor of universal masking.
Yes, yes. I'm just so happy to see you guys masked. I am strongly in favor of universal masking. I taught sixth grade in Westminster last year. My, my, one of my children, children will be in first grade next year and another in pre-K in Westminster. And I think the ultimate goal of any school is to make sure that their students are safe. And I think that with the rise in cases right now in conjunction with the Delta variant and variants that will probably be sure to follow, we have an obligation to make sure that all of our kids are safe. And the easiest way to do that is to assure that students are universally masked and teachers are universally masked in schools throughout the school year until students, the vaccine is widely available to students and they are able to be vaccinated against COVID. I think that it would be putting teachers and students at risk if we were to go into the school year and not have masking in place universally for all students.
Thank you very much, we will be discussing this in some detail if you're, if you're patient, wish to hang in there. It will definitely come up and I will appreciate your input because I like to make the input.
Yes, I will definitely hang in there, it's pretty important to me.
Excellent, is there anyone else? Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I don't think I will send my students, my, my own children to school if universal masking is not in place in school in, in the fall.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any other further communications from anyone, Chris, that you can see? And if we're not recognized, you shout loudly at us and we'll recognize you that way. All right, well, let's move on to, to review and approve board minutes. And I think at this point with the, with the approval of my colleagues on the Westminster Board, what we should do here is have an approval of our, the unified districts minutes and then have a approval of the Westminster minutes and then we can move on. Does that seem reasonable to everyone?
Very good, thank you.
All right, as long as we get to go through this. So I'm looking for a, a motion to approve the minutes. And if my Westminster colleagues here is in the, in the, in the unified district minutes, they can certainly speak up.
So moved.
All right, any, any clarifications or comments?
Just a note for this minutes and very minor thing, but my, my name is spelled Major without the S and I haven't seen that. Minor, minor matter.
All right, well, you can be among the people who's among the frequently misspelled. Name like mine, it comes up a lot and we won't even talk about Ginger. So, all right, so that's all in favor?
Aye.
Jessa?
Yes, can you hear me now, by the way?
We can hear you clearly, succinctly. And Melissa?
I was going to abstain, I wasn't at the last meeting.
All right, we've got a two to zip vote in favor. Well, I'm going to recess and let, let my Westminster colleagues.
All right, let me ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes since July 15.
Aye, so moved.
David Major has moved that we approve those minutes. Any comments? Then all in favor, Mr. Major?
Aye.
And I'll allow myself to vote aye, so those minutes are approved, no corrections.
All right, then we're going to come out of recess and we're back to the, to the unified district meeting. And what is, I can just pull my agenda here, I do this separate comment because I don't, I'm almost very one loose paperwork. And let's start with principals' reports. This is yours.
Yeah, absolutely. I know that something was sent out with the S U report, but I do have some additions that I'd like to add. And I'll just reiterate, we're finishing up our six-week summer program tomorrow. It was run by our new after-school program and summer program site coordinator, Matthew Cordier, was wonderful. And they went swimming every Wednesday, field trips every Friday. We had roughly between around 40 participants averaging, maxing at 53. It was just really great, it was wonderful to have kids in the building and lots of fun. We held our kindergarten camp earlier in Ju- July with Ms. Paula and Ms. Michelle. They got to new students, lots of fun, and from that they created class lists. And that goes into that our summer mailing went out this week, so registration packets went home. Also, teachers sent individual letters to families, so families should be receiving those at least this week, if not early next week. And a familiar face from Westminster will be moving to central office. So our beloved Trish Adams will be moving to be the administrative assistant, Dr. Carey. She'll do a fantastic job, but we will be replacing her with another familiar face of Westminster. Bridgette Goodell will be taking over in the front office. So we are really feeling in good hands and pumped about that. And we have a new head of maintenance, Wade Camp, he's been very busy this summer and getting all the floors ready. And but we've had some additional maintenance projects that are happening now and will be continuing for the next few weeks. We've had the installation of six mini splits from the classrooms. Those were just before I arrived, but they had not been installed, those are fully installed at this point. We will be repairing a heating coil in the dining room that has not been functioning for some time. And my thought is if we are going to be using the dining room at all this year, which I'm not sure if that is what's going to happen, but if we do, we need that heating coil fixed to be able to have air circulation in the dining room, which is not happening at this point. With the storms that happened last week, we were affected with some lightning. So our fire panel was not working, that'll be replaced. And so the insurance company will be covering to keep us up to code, so that'll involve replacing the fire panel. But once we replace the fire panel, the new fire panel involves, requires a voice evacuation system, which is an additional cost, so we're hopeful that because both of those projects are required to get us up to code, that they'll both be covered by insurance and we're not yet sure. Working with Jim DeBel to navigate all of those pieces. We're also updating our storm drain permitting, which has been out of date for some time, so we'll get into that next week. And with the playground audit, we have been updating our playgrounds. One thing that we had to do, so there's like a level one hazard and a level two hazard with the report. The level one for our slide was, there's a space between the slide and the platform. So we were able to fill that with caulking, but the level two hazard was that the slide gets very hot and that was a concern of the insurance. So we were able to purchase a separate slide this spring through ESER, but the installation of a slide is a whole other beast, which we will be thinking about for next summer and brainstorming how we can fund that. We're in the process of receiving a quote, so we just kind of know what we're dealing with at the point. And as far as staffing, we are fully staffed with, after tonight's meeting, we'll be fully staffed aside from one special educator and a few special education pairs.
Got it.
Questions?
Anybody's questions or votes, Chris?
I do have a question, I didn't see in your report, whereas I did see in Grafton, an estimate of the number of enrolled students.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry, I missed that, we have about 160?
One.
160.
160.
160, yeah, thank you.
I have cop, we are dealing with S U grant money and there's potential, this, here, is it phase three? Is that the right phrasing of my, I don't want to screw this up.
That would be deciding on S U two and three.
Well, the, the, my focus simply is that we have discretionary work that needs to be done on infrastructure. I just would encourage you and our apps and Angela to have, have a list together because anything that we can get done that way, since this is sort of one and done money, money that we spend on staff, there's some money we have to continue to fund after, after the money's gone. But we have a number of outstanding issues, both in Grafton and in the high school and at, and here, that I guess would encourage you to get together and have your shopping list.
Yeah, well, that's what I've been trying to do, is kind of think about what I would request and align that with a quote so that I know how much money we're, would be possibly at requesting.
Who is handling the, anything from Angela, because I have some notes from her, but I don't want to speak on her behalf.
Anything other than what was included in Chris's email.
Chris, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was going to say that all principals of all the schools in the S U have already been, that list has already been compiled months ago, so we already have that, so that's already been taken care of. What was the other question?
Just if there were other notes from Angela beyond what was in the report. You know, I know that there, we'll briefly discuss the playground in Grafton, but I didn't know.
No, that's all I had.
If there was painting, I knew there was some septic issues a year or two ago and I didn't know if they had shown up in anybody's place.
No.
I'll chat with you about that. All right, good enough. Moving on, is there, shall we talk about finance? And Chris, are you prepared to talk about that or are you feeling like we're a little early for that tonight?
Flora's with us online, so if she can unmute and speak it up.
Flora, unmute.
She was with us.
All right, so we have a question, so I'll do my best answer. Jess, are we, when are we anticipating being able to start sort of a fiscal review so we can get the budget process started before this emphasis?
Very soon. The, we've already worked with the auditors and we're hoping to have the audit completed by November, so it's done before we start working on the budget this year. So that's already going the way Flora and her office have been working hard. We've already started putting together the preliminary stuff that they need to do the audit. So the audit will be done before budget season starts.
Excellent, are you aware of any surprises that we need to care about?
No.
I like no surprises.
Related to that, if I may, Chris, that requires closing out the current budget year in order to be completing that audit.
Right, to write down that.
Right, perfect. And so even though the audit's not complete, might we see preliminary numbers to give us a sense? For example, we have been looking at some potential surpluses and that will affect the financial, the final financial agreement between Westminster and the Union School District. And I'm just wondering kind of where we are with that, that'll end up.
That'll be part of the budget process when someone don't get that information. Is that working on the budget?
Well, I had the opportunity to have a very helpful meeting with Flora maybe several weeks ago and I thought we might, I thought that we might get some preliminary numbers before the audit was completed, just preliminary, just to kind of assess.
Before the audit was completed?
Correct.
Wait, they haven't completed the audit yet. The audit, it won't start.
Well, I just meant.
Until September, so anything that, as we get the information from the auditors, we'll obviously.
Just so everyone knows who the tall stranger is of the past coming in, Charlie, why don't you greet yourself and what board you're on?
Hi, my name is Charlie Hutchinson, one of the Westminster interviewers.
You know, you don't score 10th point, oh, you get two, two merit points off the gadget from Russia. Let me ask my colleagues to my left, any questions on anything thus far? All right, well, then we're, we're going to move on. There's, the S U report is listed as an item, is there anything beyond what's in your superintendent's report you want to touch on, Chris?
Nope, it's all in there, it's posted online, so people in the public, if they want to view it, they just go to the WA's website, scroll down a little bit and you'll see the dependence newsletter on the right, my report is there.
All right, excellent, thank you very much. Old business, where are we, actually?
Hey, Jack.
Yes?
I just want to make a comment. I just have a comment that I guess belongs under the finance piece. I don't know if people realized it, but at the S U meeting last night, we actually voted not just for the ESER grant, we voted that all grant spending has to go to the board. And that includes Title I, that includes basically anything we get in grant funding form. And that is a huge change for both finance and administrators, so they should be aware of that. I think that was inadvertent, but we did it.
I think as a maker of that motion, I will confess to sound a bit of a possible, you know, brain fart on that one. But I think that was really also just that when we do budgets, when we understand, when we review the operations of our institutions, we need to be mindful that we are guardians of all monies coming in and out. I'm a big believer in unified budgets, should have a budget for the taxpayers to explain to them what we propose to spend their money on, but when we spend other money, we should at least be aware of internally what is being spent on. I don't expect to have detailed reports or massive justifications and God help us, endless debates about the merits of Title I spending, but I do think it's useful for us as boards to see the bigger picture. And with so much money these days coming from sources other than taxpayers, we need to have a larger picture. So that part was there intentionally. Is that helpful or make it worse?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, we'll, we'll, you know.
I just think it's a point, I think it was an inadvertent oversight in the warning or in the wording. And Chris and the administration office are going to have to figure it out what we.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, it wasn't really an oversight, it was an attempt to both compromise and get to the issue. I didn't think we should be fighting over where we spend $10 ESER money, but I did think that it would be helpful for your budget carry team to have a better idea as to what the whole picture is, because sometimes it takes hard to, to establish. And it was really more for my personal benefit than anybody else's, so I get some idea of what we're doing. Is there, I thought, I see, thank you, I see all sorts of hands up now. Chris?
Flora, business manager has joined us, so if you wanted to run those questions by her, I'm sure she can give you a much detailed answer.
All right, let's see, you want to, you want to recapitulate there, Cheryl?
Oh, Flora, thank you, we've heard from Chris that the audit process is going to be moving along quickly and that we ought to see those results in November, well before the budget process gets hugely involved. I was wondering if we were going to see any preliminary numbers. We've been, you know, seeing reports on a regular basis up to around June 15 or June 1, something like that. And I wondered if there were any closing numbers, not finished, not final, but that board members might have a look at.
So we are finishing with state reportings and I might have by next week final numbers, which is the same numbers that we are submitting to the state, that is for expenses as well for revenue. But that's what we will have as finalized numbers itself. Yes, everything gets adjusted and might change a little bit when audits get done, but at least you will have a better picture. I know you have questions when it comes to a lot of the mix with summer pays, you know, FY21 numbers rolling over with FY22. But yes, we're hoping that everything will be said by next week.
That was my understanding, so thank you, we'll look forward to it and we understand their problem there until we see, until you see.
So auditors are scheduled to come in all, in office August, October 4th. So auditors are scheduled to come in all, in office August, October 4. But we are working next week, next Tuesday, we're meeting in the office. So we can start gathering all the information the auditors are asking. So that way, when they come in office, you know, it will be an easy transition. And they will be able to put everything together for us fast.
Thank you.
I saw a question from you, did I, David?
Not from me, no.
All right, Charlie, did you have your hand up or just?
No, but I was wondering, is it possible to put this on speaker view so we can see the person speaking?
Only if they turn their video on.
Which we have seen.
I, I, for, when you were, before you came on, Jessa raised a polite version of, are you sure you knew what you were doing question about last evening's resolution about having all monies Esser and other grants be, be at least reviewed by, if not approved necessarily, by, by the individual boards. So that folks have a sense of where the other money is coming from and where it's going. I, Jessa, I don't want to speak for you, but my, my, my take was that you wanted some sense as to whether or not there was going to be an extraordinary burden attached to that, that roughly.
Something to that effect. I don't know if maybe Lynn can answer it better. But like our Title I funding is grants, and we voted last night grants, not just Esser. And I think that might be burdensome if they have to bring all of that to the boards. I'm not sure. I guess it's a Flora and Lynn question. But anything that's grant funded, I think falls under what was voted last night.
Right. And I think we're, we're asking if we made a mistake. And if it is. Flora, you want to take a swing at this?
Yes, so my understanding, and I might, I do understand what Jessa had mentioned. And it was a concern for me as well. But when you guys mentioned Esser, I did understand that the board is looking for new projects. And that things that we have previous grants that are actually maybe not 100% in stone. Set in stone, but at least a 90%, you know, like a Title I, for example, this is an ongoing grant for us. This is expenses that the board is aware and might be changing here a little bit here and there. But at this point, if the board will be looking into every single grant. It, it will be definitely a lot of work on our end. I will need at least one board member that will be dedicated to come into the office and review this with us. So we could submit this to the state, you know, like right now, we have FY21 grants closed out by the end of this week as well. You know, having to review every single grant constantly. We could risk losing funds, you know, if the board is not able to get to this on time. If for some reason, you know, we had to relook into things and constantly submitting amendments as well. I think that this is something that maybe the board needs to look into rewording. If it is something that is not for every single grant, and if it's just for Esser. Right now, we will have to maybe sit and analyze the grants that we have submitted already. So I'm not sure exactly what, everything that you guys actually wanted and needed. And the ins and outs of why, I just thought that when it comes to Esser, I, since it is a new grant, it's a new project related to COVID. That that is what they actually, the board is looking into, not grants that we, you know, get on a yearly basis.
I, I, speaking as a maker of the motion, I'd be deeply disappointed if we nitpick. Or sought from the board's perspective to amend grants. That doesn't seem like a useful strategy. It's more the idea that we would have an acknowledgement that they came in and awareness of what the money was. And if it gets beyond that, I'll be the first person to object.
I think what Flora is saying is that what happens is that before we even submit the grants, based on the motions that we had last night. Board has to approve it, the SU board has to approve them, and then it has to go to each individual board. So like she says, with the time frame we have and the time it's going to take, the business office will be very busy trying to process grants. And then in addition to that, we're most likely going to lose out millions of dollars because the time just isn't there to get approval. Like the boards are insisting.
I, I, I want to push back about the assistance part, but we will continue on with this. Go ahead.
I, I just want to point out, Jack, that each of the boards submits a budget every year before voters. Budget is voted on, that includes a lot of the grants.
Obviously not, no. But go ahead.
Well, I mean, it, it refers to a lot of the grants, I believe. And that is, that is part of the overall expenses and revenues the voters look at. And I, so I, I'm not sure that we need to be examining it in such particular detail every time a grant comes up for these routine grants like the Title I ones.
I, I, I hear you. I see Charlie, then I see Cheryl, and I don't know.
Just going to suggest, I think it's pretty obvious that was a mistake made last night. It doesn't really bear a whole lot more conversation except to say, let's amend it. And, and, and return it to the intention, which was to scrutinize proposals for the Esther grant only. Is there really much more to say than that?
Cheryl?
I would actually reinforce Charlie's point in that the intent of this was really to look at this influx of a large amount of new money. But certainly not to put this community's chances for getting that infusion of resources at risk. That's absolutely, certainly not what I think the board's intent was. So let's make sure that that doesn't happen.
I, I will, I will ask our chair to put this back up on the agenda for the review. Again, my, my intent was to systematize whatever it was we did. To make it consistent across the board and to take out what I thought was an unfortunately almost accusatory tone that I thought was unhelpful in the discussion. Because the original proposal was essentially what felt like almost a line item examination. I felt that was, that was inappropriate, and I just wanted something consistent. Chris?
Yeah, I think it's important to note too, Jack, you did not make the motion of a proposal to the grants. All you, you know, you put in a reasonable amendment to it. So I just think the public should know it wasn't the initial proposal or motion not come from Jack Ryan. It was something that he proposed an amendment to, to lessen the burden on administration, so I just wanted that.
Thanks. And, and as I say, if, if there's, if we have burden here. That's obviously one thing we don't want to do is we don't want to put monies at risk. Well, that turned out to be as long as I thought it was going to be. All right, Jerome, I'm cheating, I'm going to go on to.
Have another unfinished business.
Go right ahead.
I, I think in the category of unfinished business, that does have to do with the withdrawal of Westminster.
Yeah, thank you.
The Windermarke Eastern Elementary School District, conditionally approved by the State Board of Education. And just to recap for people, we've had, we've taken one step that was authorized by the State Board of Education. And that was to elect a board, so you have a three-person board sitting here. The next important step for the public to know about is that August 31, there will be a vote by the voters of the three towns, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. In the case, to, for those three towns, to approve a financial agreement, which is simply stated that Westminster assumes the debt for the gymnasium that we built some years ago. And secondly, we, the two school buildings are returned to the Westminster School District. There'll be an additional ballot vote on that same date for Westminster voters. Which is a request for the voters to consider expanding the board from three people to five. So that's the next step. And then September 15, the State Board of Education reviews the progress that we've made as we move ahead to having full authority way down the road, July 1, 2022. There are more steps in between, but I'm just reviewing the most immediate next steps that have come up, if that's helpful.
On that point, a governance issue came up last night that I think people need to be aware of. The WNESU is a membership organization of independents, otherwise independent school districts. There is the, there's a, there is a Westminster School District now. There is the Rockingham School District, Zappella's Falls Union High School District, and there is a unified district. Question came up as to what the status is of the, of Westminster relative to their membership and voting membership on the, on the WNESU board. We have a recollections difference. My recollections, as the person that stuck around for the whole meeting, was that the only question about membership in the WNESU was whether or not the now soon to be Athens, Grafton school board would be, continue to be a member of that district. That the issue about whether Westminster would be part of it was assumed to be settled. This is important because if it's not settled, then Westminster is lacking three votes. If it is settled, then they should have full representation, even though they are not, they don't have authority over the. They don't have authority over governance of their building, there should be full participants. And we will need to clarify with new chair of the, of the State Board of Education, the status. I think it's very important that Westminster have full status. Because you, as a soon to be independent, fully independent district, will bear the costs of WNESU expenditures. You need to be a full player on, and voting member on board on, on expenses and on budget. And I'd like to get that wrapped up and resolved sooner rather than later. If you want to propose that, I write a letter to the new chair, I'm happy to do that. If you want to have Chris do that, or if you want to do that on your own, Cheryl, you know, tell me what you'd like to do.
New chair of the State Board of Education.
Yes. Oliver's.
It's a good question, and there's good arguments on both sides.
Well, I'm wondering if we should hear from them, what their thought is, use that as basis. I'm just trying to figure, you should, you should write the query.
I think given the timing, I mean, this is an issue for the September 15 already scheduled board meeting where we will be a part of that meeting and they ask us what progress we've made.
All right, you don't, I'm thinking, yeah, that's, that's fine, I just want, I want that solved before we go on to budget.
And I do think maybe a, a joint email between the two of us saying, this is a question that we want to make sure is addressed at that September 15 meeting would be, would actually get it addressed, I think.
And then we'll take that in the form of a proposal.
Just to clarify, we were talking about subsequent to the separation, the final separation of the board.
I'm saying that you are, that in my view, and what I believe I heard was that you are provisionally a district. That, but that your membership as a member of the WNESU is not in question. The, what, there was some confusion about last evening and has been some confusion about is whether or not the State Board of Education has warranted you as a member of this SU. We did not think that was a new question, and we feel that perhaps it is up to them to resolve rather than for our lawyers or ourselves to guess at their intention.
I, I think, as I understand, sorry. As I understand it, there's no question that they have said that Westminster is to, is to continue or re.
Right.
Remain or be restored as a member of the WNESU. But the question at this point is more, when does that representation start? Does it start as quickly as possible because the effects of the decisions of the WNESU members will affect the Westminster district starting with the next budget year? Or does it start July 1 of 2022? I think that that, that is the the main question. When would you like us Westminster board members to start?
Right, or just what, we don't, you don't own the building, but are you participants and are you voting participants? And I think it's, I just, you know, you may not want their answer. But I'm saying if you do, I think they're, they're, they're the only ones that are able, have the ability to, to determine it without any ambiguity.
I think it's fine in either way.
All right, so. So do I have a sense of the meeting, play your style, that, that's okay with everyone?
I, I think it's okay to ask for clarification on September 15. I actually believe, listening to what I've seen from the attorneys, that the attorneys for the state believe that Westminster does not have full authority, therefore full standing until July 1, 2022.
Right, but the question was whether they, their, their governance ability for this building is one thing. The, the question is, does that extend to their ability to participate as voting members?
I think they think not.
We may, we may, we may very, we may very well find that out. I'm just hoping that we might get a yes, that you're all set and ready to go from.
But right now, we, we have, the last night's meeting assumed that we were not, hence Cheryl's election as a non-voting member.
Right, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm not very subtly pushing to make certain that you guys have more full representation. If we can be allowed to have that, because I think I'm not comfortable having SU budget decisions made without you having voting representation.
By the way, we went out during the discussion last night, Cheryl's name was mentioned on the night, but in the resolution, Cheryl's name wasn't mentioned. It was a member of the board. Does that mean that if you're out for, or somebody else can stop for you? Was that, would that be the other setting of the SU board?
The, the SU board doesn't, does not play by the rules that are written. Which says that we are supposed to designate members, and those are the members. In most boards, that's how it works. In practice, over the last 20 years, what we have done is we've had the chair designate subs, as it were. So if she's not available, she could designate one of you guys. It's sufficiently common practice at this point that I don't think there'd be any objection to continuing with it. Someday, we ought to actually fix our bylaws to reflect that, but that's a different discussion. Yep. So where are we at next? New business. Why don't we start off with the appointments and resignations? This, you, you've already covered that?
Well, yes, Aline Brown, who was our school nurse last year, has been, has resigned.
Yes.
I'm recommending the hire of Megan Rink, who, to replace that position as our school nurse. She most recently was a labor and delivery nurse at Bradley Memorial Hospital. Before that, she was a nurse at the Bradley Bowl Retreat. And we think she would be an absolute asset to our people.
As a father of labor and delivery nurse, you pinch hit for the, for the Chelsea Massachusetts School System as their chief, as their chief school nurse. I know that labor and delivery nurses are very good at this.
Her name again?
Megan Rink, R-I-N-K.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, are there any others of this type, or we?
And I have another appointment as school counselor.
Right.
So Carla Quadro will be, I'm recommending that she move over from the Vello's Falls Middle School. She has been part of our SU for 26 years as both an ELA teacher and most recently a school counselor at the middle school. And I would like her, I think she would be a great asset to our school in replacing our school counseling opening.
But this is, this is a replacement, not a new position. And by the way, I don't, thank you to Nicole and Chris for, for sending a little mini spreadsheet with all those numbers. I know that comes up with some of our colleagues on other boards, so good for you for doing that. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, what else we got?
Do you take any action?
Oh, yes, we have to do, we should have a res. Oh, yes, we have to do, we should have a resolution of approval. Thank you. So I'm looking for a resolution of approval by my colleagues. Any discussion? All in favor? Jessa?
I, Liz can hire whoever she wants.
Couldn't agree more. All right, so off we go with that. And what else? I, I'm sorry, I'm stealing your sheet, because I really, I can't seem to pull it up on my own screen. Health and safety guidance, this is presumably the, our, our fun discussion about, about what we're going to use as a basis for guidance. Thank you. I've recorded that Lynn pulled up the agenda so that I don't have to steal my colleague's notes. Yeah, health and safety guidance, again, those who tuned in for last night's festivities will know that we had a chat about a, the, the state has proposed a set of guidance about masking and vaccination. And, and I'm going to ask Chris to summarize it, and then tell you the, the motion I proposed that gets thunderously defeated last night, just in case anybody's interested in revising it. Chris, you want to take, take a shot at this?
Yeah, sure. Last night I proposed to the SU board that we adopt the recommendation coming from Dr. Levine and Secretary of Education and French along with the governor to adopt their idea of essentially the first ten days of school, everyone would wear a mask. As soon as those schools have reached eighty percent of students being vaccinated, that school would, you know, no longer be required to wear a mask. What's the caveat is, is that right now we know that anyone from twelve and under does not have access to the vaccination at this point. So that would mean that until they do, they would, those, those schools, those grade levels would have to wear masks until they were vaccinated. We do have access to that information, you know, we get it through the state. They don't tell us the names, but they can tell us the, the percentage of students who have vaccinated. So that was what was proposed last night at the SU board meeting, and it was approved. So for SU employees, and I guess, happy students, but, so I guess at the SU level, it was kind of a empty approval, because we really don't have any students at the SU. It really comes down to each individual school. So that was what I proposed last night. That's why I will continue to propose it on the individual school districts because I think we have to be united, you guys, to, to the way we are rolling out how kids are going to come back and wear masks. So I'm making the same proposal tonight based on the recommendation from the state, which that's also on the SU website, the letter from Secretary French. It's also in my newsletter, if you scroll down, so you can take a look at that for those of you who are interested. So that's my proposal that I'll be making to each and every school board. If we start getting to have different protocols for different schools, I can see that's going to be a nightmare, not just for administration, but for parents and for its. I don't have to say anymore about that. It can be quite disastrous if each school is doing something different. So my recommendation is to adopt the suggestions by the state.
Just for the record, I gave my, I didn't intend to give my superintendent a hard time about this, but I feel and still feel that medical data on this is important to understand, and CDC guidelines are important to understand. CDC guidelines are updated daily, and that makes it very timely. The CDC guidelines tend to be fairly simple because they want them to be, they want them to be easily implemented. And the guidelines at present are for universal masking irrespective of vaccination status. And I propose that we go with that in preference to, to the state guidelines. And the reason again is that we now know some things we didn't know a month ago. We know that Delta variant is taking off even in our area. Jessa last night pointed out the forty-two, not the forty, that I had listed as folks with infection. We have some folks that should still be in our high school but dropped out, that actually have, that have the disease, and I know that personally. That, so it, so it's not only in our, in our counties, in our towns. The, the problem with the vaccination right now is there's a big argument about some of the statistics. And if you take one side or the other, the efficacy rate for the mRNA vaccines, which is still the world standard, could be as low as seventy-three percent. Seventy-three percent sounds great, but you have a reproduction rate of R zero between five and eight for the, for the current Delta variant. So even if we had an eighty percent, eighty-five percent, possibly even ninety percent vaccination rate, that would not get us to a point where we could put the virus to bed absent masking. That's why the, that's why the CDC has recommended we do both. I propose that we adhere to the CDC guidelines and was rather thunderously defeated. But I bring this up to you all, because if you think that's something you'd rather do, my discussion with Priscilla last night, this morning, was that if we decided that was something we would want to do, she'd have more interest in standardizing on that. But it's up to you all. Any thoughts, guys? You still feel the way you did? Lynn? Three young spots. And then, well, I will go around more on this.
I just know I was very pleased with the way Governor Scott handled everything over this past year, which is why I am comfortable staying with him. Because it seemed like he was following the CDC, and he could tweak it to our individual needs.
All right.
That's how I was viewing it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Do we have the ability, I mean, so at this point, our schools would only qualify if the vaccine became available for younger children? And it's kind of a, a loose point until that occurs?
Well, we have, we do have, we've had, I don't know if we have any over twelves right now in this.
To reach the eighty percent, or it would even make a difference to matter, it doesn't seem like.
Well, one of the, one of the questions I had about raising this was whether or not it was premature because the, the likely target date that I've heard from people I know is that the, that the FDA or CDC guidance probably won't shift until early, early till later December. So we can simply pass this over without action, or we can, for the moment, ratify Chris's recommendation, and, and always change it later if we felt the need. It kind of sounds like that's what he'd like to do.
I'm comfortable with that. I'll have the conversation when it's more relevant.
All right, that's, go ahead, David.
Yeah, I, I, as I understand it, at this point, there is no daylight between what the CDC is, is suggesting. For this school district, for, for.
President.
Crafton and Westminster schools, because it's all age twelve and under. There's no daylight between what the CDC is recommending and what the state is recommending. And, and far be it from me or any of us, I think, to predict what things will look like in December. And we meet every month or twice a month, and we can, we can, the supervising union can, can adjust things as time goes on. So I think at this point, just to be positive about it, I would recommend that for these elementary school districts, we, we okay this recommendation from the state and, and recognizing that what that means is for this whole fall, at least, kids are going to be mixed.
All right, Cheryl, anything?
I, I agree with that. I think it's important that the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District vote to ratify the action that was taken last night, and certainly to review it as time goes on. And I want the public to understand this does mean that all children and all staff will be masked, that that is the environment, the safety environment that this board is committed, doing everything we can do to support that.
Charlie?
I'm totally in agreement with that. I think since there is no practical difference between the two recommendations at this point, let's go with.
All right, then I'll entertain a formal motion to that effect.
Can I also just ask, um, do teachers and students have the ability to have an accommodation not to wear a mask if they have a note with a medical? Because that's a hard thing to put everybody in the category of, if there are some staff or students who it's not feasible for them to wear a mask?
I, I thank you for that. I, one of the, one of, one of the calls I got today, another lengthy one, was regarding a child with autism in one of our districts, and whether or not the so-called shielding might be an accommodation in a case like that. I know we did that last year somewhat reluctantly, but did it, at least in one of, one of the districts. And I, and I did wonder if that would be, preclude that as an option.
Yeah, I, I think in those cases there, you know, we, we need to look at each individual student's and their needs and make adjustments accordingly, but making sure that those adjustments are still keeping other students and themselves safe. So accommodations could be, you know, for those kids, you know, a shield or something. But I think in the most general point is that we're going to have to wear something. And so, you know, that would be, those decisions there, I would say, would have to be made by the IEP team and come up with the best solution for that student and what that looks like. I don't want to put a blanket statement out that we need to take care of each kid individually and meet their needs. And this is just an example.
Oh, Cheryl?
Thank you, and good, good points. Chris, I, I just wanted to add a couple of things again for the public and ask Liz to speak to this because this, this experience of teaching and having children masked has been something you all as staff here have lived with for more than a year.
Yeah.
More than a year. And, and so let me make a comment and then ask you to kind of address that as well. Another point in this guidance is that it does say that when the children outdoors, they need not wear masks. That's a little bit less restricted than it was previously. So when outdoors, masks are not needed, and everybody at the same time is going to be careful about that. I mean, kind of aware of, of what's going on. If there are situations where children are having a terrible problem with it, then it would go to, to review in some way, in some way. But for the most part, it's my understanding that it's gone well. And another kind of, I know we don't have the scientific evidence on this, but I hear over and over again there were fewer colds, there was fewer, less flu, there were all kinds of positives that came with all of this. So please add your own.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that students were shockingly great about wearing their mask. I mean, we thought it was going to be much more, many more reminders. That was not even the issue. They were so great about wearing their masks. If they saw somebody with, they were reminding each other. Staff obviously were wonderful about wearing their masks. It wasn't really a problem. And so for this recommendation to go back with everyone masked, really isn't going to be a massive undertaking as it was last year before we had started, when we were like, how is this ever going to work? And it's remarkable to watch kindergartners learn to read masks. They're doing it. This is working. So I would obviously follow in what Superintendent Pratt is recommending for the masking because it really has been not a problem, and students have been so great about it.
I have a question. I don't know if there are any families that are absolutely digging the heels in resistance on this, but do they have the option still of, of learning remotely if they're absolutely refused to do this?
No, we're not.
Not, not at this point. I think one of the things we want to look at is that we need, we do need to look at, you know, what are the possibilities? Right now, there are no BTBLC options, but I think with the ESR funds, that's one of those things. I think we're going to try to see if we can do that. You know, so for, for right now, no, we don't have that option, but I think it's something we want to, want to explore in regards to how many families we have. And I think that's just a matter of, like we did last year, let's put that full out to families to find that out. The only downside is that, you know, if we did not have ESR funds, there's no way we'd be able to do this because of the cost, it's going to be, because we don't have. I guess the main reason right now that we, we're not exploring it as an option because we need our teachers that were doing the BTBLC before back in the buildings, because all our kids are back. And if we went with the BTBLC option, that means we're going to have to put so many teachers into the seats. We just don't have that luxury right now. But with ESR funds, you know, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars a student. So I think we have to get a good idea of how many students we're, we're looking at, and knowing that we have to look at the, at the cost. And if that's something that we need to do, then that would take precedence over, you know, some of the other stuff that may or may not have been slated for the ESR funds. So, you know, we do want to look into that as well.
So just, the outcome here is we will alert any students who are mysteriously in the school not wearing a mask without explaining. And so other kids are wondering, why isn't she wearing a mask? That's typically what will happen, with those students.
Right, my understanding is that every student will come wearing a mask.
Yes, everyone will be required to wear masks, teachers and students and any visitors to the store.
I do want to put a small circle around the question about remote learning because Jessa, you're, are you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I know Jessa had a question from a parent, and I had a question from two on the outside of my district about this question about remote learning, and I'm wondering if you want to talk to it at this point? You think it's appropriate?
I do think the only way to get it in this meeting is, as warned, with the health and safety return issue. I have a couple of other comments, and I think I can end with a motion. But, so first, numbers are indeed up in Wyndham County today. The Waterbury Summer Camp outbreak is up to twenty-eight kids, and that was a one-hundred percent outdoor activity. And the state's working at that. Yeah, it was our Parks and Rec Summer Camp. You know, like, you know, like the YMCA camp kind of thing. So there's that. The, when it comes to remote learning, there's, there's obviously one parent that's very passionate about it. I don't know if I'll be sending my child back to school. It depends on a lot of other things. Oh, and before I forget, back to the universal masking. Chris had talked about it being an IEP key issue. I had gotten a different opinion from someone equally qualified that because it is not disciplinary, it is public health, it can't be an IP issue. It can only be accommodated via an ADA request. Can you confirm whether or not that is how the state reads the law?
Yes, that's accurate, Jessa. You know, it would be the students who, it's more of a, they're, they're dealing with something that is life offering on a daily basis, which would be, you know, ADA. So, yeah, and some, some students with IEPs and stuff, it's, they fall into both of those categories. But yes, Jessa, that is accurate.
So the parents would have to make a separate ADA accommodation request. It will not be done by the IEP team.
Well, it, it could be by the IEP team, because a lot of them already have the ADA, you know, that piece, the more, the more severe students in their IEP. So I guess it could be a little bit of both.
Okay. And then, yeah, we, there was a couple of parents that were really passionate about remote learning options, especially those that have one kid who is either under twelve and can't be vaccinated or a kid with a health issue when they had an older child in the house. And after a, a quick non-scientific poll of local residents, we've already come up with seven children from the. we've already come up with seven, um, children from the Grafton Elementary School who would like a remote option. And I feel at this point, the, if the SU cannot spare the teachers, then the cost per student is $2,500 per semester. Um, which I know a lot of people don't have a reference point for that, but I looked to a couple of other online schools. Um, one very popular one is, is Pearson Academy. And that is basically the price tag equal to an online private school. Um, so it's not exorbitant or anything. But the fact that we will pay full price for not having a teacher, if you send a teacher, I think it drops to half that or something. At this point, I would like to propose that the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary District, um, follow the supervisory union's lead on following the state AOE guidance at this time for universal masking in our schools. And then also that at the elementary level, we offer an online option for parents.
Thank you, Jessa. We did need a motion and you have made it.
I have.
So, uh, any discussion of this motion at this, uh, you go ahead.
How would we do an online option? What would that look like?
It would be tuitioning to VTBLC again unless someone has a different, easy to set up in less than two weeks, uh, choice.
Uh, Chris, I saw you, you saw you start to speak to this.
It would look very similar to, to last year. And you keep it as, as uniform as possible. So we're not really changing everything. It might look a little different because we don't have teachers in there besides the price tag. Um, and I don't know if it's something that we're going to be able to pull off in the two weeks. It might be delayed a little bit, but it's definitely something, we can look into it. I don't know how full VTBLC is and what they have to at this time if they even accommodate us.
Okay, it seems like they have space for tuition kids unless it becomes wildly popular. Um, and at this point, I don't think it is. And yeah, it will be, um, it will be different because these kids will basically, last year it was some of our teachers and the, the curriculum was sort of similar that to the online learning that they were kind of forced into 2020. This would be a little bit different in that the kids would be following the standard VTBLC elementary program, which they've actually had in place. Um, it looks, to me, it looks like it's gonna be a little bit better than what the kids got last year. Um, just because all of a sudden VTBLC had to scale to 10 times their current, their previous size. But it, it would basically be the same. They will still be, uh, students of our district. They're testing, you know, and the, the state assessments, they will take their test as Grafton students and show up on the numbers, just like they're in Grafton. It's just kind of like an out of district placement. They're just learning not in this school building. Um, and if the, since we weren't able to do it at the SU level, that's why I'm proposing we do this at the elementary level. And once we gauge interest and get the price tag, um, we'll figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
We, we have a motion. Is there any others speaking? I, I particularly like to hear from our OS colleagues because this may end up uh, being an item of interest for some of those parents as well. Especially some parents that don't want their kids to be masked and are very unhappy about that as an item. So, um, is there any, any thoughts on this, objections to it? Because I'm gonna ask for a vote.
Jack?
Yes?
Um, last year, did we not find that there were some children that actually excelled better in the online learning at the BTBLC, and comparison to what they've been doing in class?
Yes.
Uh, my, my impression is we had some that did, did much better. We also had some that did a hard gale after a few weeks in, which meant that, uh, that Chris and Wynne had a scramble like crazy to make that all work. Uh, and I won't be shocked if we have some more of that. Uh, but hopefully this is gonna go away someday, so we don't have to do it.
So just to ask, with Jessa's motion, um, this applies to all children in the, in their families in the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. So it would be Westminster and Athens.
And Rutherford.
It would be, yes.
Right. And, and, and is the way you phrase this, uh, is it to explore the feasibility? Is it to commit to it? I'm not sure.
Legislative intent, Jessa, what, what, what say you?
Um, my intent is actually to commit to having the option available tonight, uh, for families to decide because it is so close to the start of school. And yes, I know there is, um, anti-masker parents who wanted to get the answers last night from the SU meeting to decide whether or not to put their kids in private school. And then we have parents with health concerns. And it's just getting too late to not have a hard option for them. So yes, I would like to decide tonight that indeed this will be available. If VTBLC cannot take the number of kids that we would like to put in there, then we will find a separate online program approved by the state as an independent school if necessary.
That doable even a little bit, uh, Chris?
I'll go with over the voice.
All right, I saw.
Do we, do we have any guess? Uh, any guess about how many kids in this school or in the Athan School might, uh, might take advantage of this?
My guess, my guess in the Athens Grafton School will probably be 10 or less. But I can't say for sure. I don't know about Westminster.
Yeah. Uh, I've heard of five in, in Westminster uh, and two to three in, in Rockingham that have been very vocal about it, uh, based on one of the reasons I'm white. Um, but I, you know, I think Rockingham has to make their own decision on this, but, uh, but just saying that's where we're starting from. Yeah, I know it's an impact, uh, you know, another scramble of budgets and everything else, but there it is.
Do you have a sense of kids in this school who might or might not?
I was just gonna say about three to five that I could think of off the top of my head. I don't have that's very informally. I don't have any real hard.
Three to five out of 160.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris?
So if this is passed tonight, could you share that with Crystal Lambert and the Rockingham Board? Because they have a meeting on Monday.
Yep. Uh, I will, I'm starting to talk to Crystal a lot lately. So, um, yeah, I'll do that. So, okay, uh, so calling the question. All in favor of the motion as proposed by Jessa? And by the way, do we have this text? Uh, a copy of this text so that I don't have to, there's a, there's a text line underneath the screen. And, uh, I read what she proposed and I just want to make sure we have.
Jessa, read, read.
Jessa, you wanna?
Yeah, I just proposed that the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary District follow the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union recommendation to follow the Vermont Agency of Education guidelines, uh, regarding help, uh, I don't want to say just masking, regarding COVID-19 hygiene measures in schools. In addition, the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary District will offer an online option for families that they have to choose within the next week.
Um, thank you for that. Um, I, I'm going to suggest that the option, online option part be informal as opposed to a formal part of the recommendation, if you don't mind. Uh, are we at a point where we can vote?
Can I come in now?
Go ahead.
I, I, just because, uh, there are two different subjects. And for clarification sake, I wonder whether, whether Jessa, you would consider splitting it up into two motions. One, to okay the state guidelines for elementary school districts and, uh, and second to, uh, to instruct the, the district to, um, offer remote learning for kids who would like.
I will do that if it's acceptable because remote learning wasn't worn on the meeting. I'm kind of sneaking it in under the COVID health and safety. So if that is acceptable to everybody, I am acceptable to amending the motion to remove the online portion of the statement.
The, the chair is ruling that both subject, that both resolutions are, or proposals are fit under the, uh, under the item. So.
Okay. So my, my motion is amended to, to, uh, just include the following the SU AOE, um, health and safety guidelines at this time.
All right, um, we want to revisit this a third time with rewording. Um, okay, uh, roll call time. Uh, I've got two yeses. I believe that's what I'm looking at. Uh, Jessa, are you in favor of your own motion?
I, yes, I will vote for that.
There you go. Ginger, are you here tonight? I, I really can't stand the fact that I can't see who's here and who isn't. I just see that there are six participants. You can't tell who in heaven's name they are. Um, Ginger?
None of them is named Ginger.
Then I'm going to guess no. All right, uh, so the motion passes. Now, uh, I'm looking for that second motion from you, Jessa.
Ah, yes, my second motion is that the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary District will offer an online-only virtual learning option for families before school starts on September 7th.
Thank you.
Any clarification? Is this anybody who wants to, or only for medical reasons?
This is, this is, this is, you, if you want it, you got it.
You don't have to explain why.
I don't think you should have to.
No, this is for anybody who, um, for whatever reason, uh, prefers their kids to have at least one more semester of virtual learning.
That's right. All right, um, again, I will call the question in reverse order. Jessa, are you in favor of your own motion?
Indeed, I am.
Uh, no surprise. Wynne says, says yes, Melissa says yes, and I'm gonna go on the record in the great. All right, very good. So that's done. What else we got, madam? There's, hmm? Playground. Uh, there is, uh, people may have been caught by surprise that the, um, that the Grafton Elementary School portion of the playground, there's one standing, not the swing set, not the, not, uh, some of the other rigmarole, but the piece that has the steering wheel on it and a little, a little walkway. Um, do you, do you want, do you want to do this or do you want me to do this?
Right ahead. You know more, you know more specifics than I.
Okay, I've walked by it every day and, uh, it's cracked. And we thought, well, crack is repairable. Only, uh, the Vermont, what, the, what's our insurance company, PI, something like?
School Insurance Trust?
Yeah, thank you. Them said not only is it broken, it's not repairable. And oh, by the way, there's no fencing that allows you to, uh, to wall it off from kids that want to mess around with it. And it is a level whatever hazard and it needs to come out now. Well, when you've got, uh, when you get information like that, it's pretty simple. And if I, uh, just for people to know, I informally polled our board members about this. So let them know and see if we need to have a special meeting about it. They did not feel that was necessary. I do think to cover Angela's sense is probably going to be in the neighborhood of a $15,000 cost to getting it out of there, that we should have a formal resolution to approve of that removal and the expenditure of necessary funds. So that's what I'm looking for. And then if anyone wants to ask about it.
I'm seeing that the funds, you know, if the public's worried about where that money's gonna come from, this is an example of what we could use ESER funds for. So.
Yeah, and, and I'm actually going to make an inquiry of, of the town if, if, uh, if there's any sense the damage was, uh, exacerbated by all the rain we had. Because there is going to be an emergency, there is going to be so many for that as well. But, uh, as, when we get to replacement, that's a different discussion, uh, for now because I don't know what we want to replace it with. I don't know who we want, what the funding source should be, if it should be institutional. Uh, I've got a possible, we, whether it should be community raised or whether it should be ESER funds, and that seems like something we can talk about next time. So, um, all in favor of authorizing, uh, the administration and principal to remove it and expend necessary funds? Um, I've got votes, I get a one vote, a two votes. Jessa?
Yes.
All right, we have unanimity on that. Thank you. So what, I'll go back, you pull this back up for me. I swear I will have this not happen the next time we're here, I hope. Um, playground policies. Um, the McKinney-Vento, um, McKinney-Vento policy is something that's required by the feds. This is having to deal with, uh, homeless and, and accommodations for that. It's been approved by, in two readings by the, uh, by the SU board, but, uh, we tend to bring this up and down votes, uh, by the individual boards. Uh, Chris, you want to take a 30-second version of this? Bring it for us.
In, in order for us to, um, spend Title I grants, this needs to be updated periodically. And so McKinney-Vento Act is the homeless act. It's just pretty much saying that we're meeting all the federal and state guidelines when it comes to educating students who are homeless. So, um, it's pretty straightforward, you know, by law, we have to have the the, the, the policy. And, um, we just make minor changes to the wording every once in a while based on how they change at the federal and state level. So that's what, um, we're bringing to the board for, I believe this will be the first reading.
Well, they've had two readings by the SU.
Right, and this would be this one's first, correct?
Yes, you know, I, I've, I don't think we've ever clarified whether the individual, uh, the individual boards need to have two readings or not. Let's get the one done tonight so we can move this along. Um, that's it. Are there any questions? Because I'm not sure everybody. I like, there's no questions. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve. That one to Wynne. Uh, all in favor? Two here, Jessa?
Hi.
Okay, unanimity on that. And is there anything else before this August audit? Um, because I'm seeing, except date, location, next meeting, and direct comments. Or anything else anybody's got? I did see there were number, there were six other folks who came in at various points, um, let's see, Allison, do you want to speak? Or is there anyone else that wants to talk that didn't get a chance to do so? At the, uh, at, at the public comments? Uh, Cheryl Sherwin also, I see. All right, then I'll take that as delight with everything we've done to this point. Uh, date, location of next meeting presumably be, uh, this day and, uh, this time. Um, and, uh.
That's our informational meeting for the vote, August 26th.
Right. Thank you for that. I was going to mess that up. Thank you. So we will have the informational meeting on August 26th. That will be a joint meeting also because, uh, there are three towns that will want information and we intend to provide it. That will be a joint meeting also because, uh, there are three towns that will want information and we intend to provide it. Thank you. That absolutely slipped me. That's it. Um, I'm going to. Great question. I, are we going to be at a point where we can ever have meetings in Grafton?
Yeah, right now it's just, uh, they're trying to get the school, well.
What's your thought about 26? Got to do it here?
Uh, yeah, without speaking to.
And it will be, sounds like it'll be here. All right, and, and it will be remote, uh, online. And we will encourage community members to participate. So, there it is. Uh, I'm trying to read this and I see, see comments and then they disappear.
I think six o'clock.
Six o'clock is our normal and the people will be able to, you know, lose their appetite over dinner when they talk about it. You know, they had served dietary purposes for those who are showing up. Okay, so 26 will be our, will be an informational meeting. And following that, we will anticipate getting back to our regular schedule, uh, Thursday meetings. Um, director's comments and, and then I'm going to, we're going to adjourn. Do you have other business you need to do for the West? Okay, so director's comments and I'm going to ask us and then I'll, um, then Cheryl can ask her people. Nothing here? Wow. Um, Jessa?
I think I've said plenty in the last two days. I'm good. Thank you, everyone though, for, um, for everything.
Not as much as I've suggested. Don't nod. The, uh, how about you guys enter this side?
Hi, just to echo what Cheryl said earlier, which is there is a vote in all three towns on the 31st to, which is one of the final steps in, uh, restoring our Athens, Grafton and Westminster schools.
Cheryl?
Restoring, actually just to clarify that the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District will stay intact with Athens and Grafton and Westminster, which is what you get.
That was the opposite of me answering. Charlie? Well, amen and hallelujah. So we, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. All in favor, get up.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you all.